This meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. There are additional agendas that were just printed in the back. If you wanted one and didn't find one on the table, feel free to go ahead and get one. Additionally, just an announcement. The presentation to the winners of the holiday decorating contest needs to be moved to our next agenda. The Main Street Association requested that we reschedule that for the next meeting. So if anybody was here for that, just want to get prepared too. We will move on to roll call.
Councilmember Barnes.
Present.
Councilmember Matina.
Here.
Councilmember Parlet.
Here.
Councilmember Spur.
Present.
And Mayor Turner.
Here.
Nick, would you lead us in a little bit?
Ready to begin.
By the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is acceptance of the agenda and any urgency items. Do we have any urgency items? No? Nope? Okay. I'll accept the motion for acceptance of our agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to accept the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are assumed to be non-controversial and not requiring discussion. Items can be removed from the consent agenda at the request of a council member or if a member of the public would like to speak to one. The items that we have going on the consent agenda tonight are waived reading except by title of any ordinance is under consideration at this meeting. Approve the minutes for the City Council December 3, 2018, special joint meeting and the regular meeting of December 4, 2018. Approve the warrant register of December 7, 2018. Confirm the continuing existence of a local emergency in the city of Lakeport. Direct the city clerk to prepare the 2019 Matty Act appointments list and post at City Hall and the Lakeport Public Library. Authorize the cancellation of the regular meeting of January 1, 2019. Adopt the resolution accepting construction of the Lakeshore Boulevard roadway repair project by Granite Construction Company and authorize the filing of the notice of completion. And authorize the city of Lakeport to contract with the County of Lakeport Dispatch Services. Council wish to have any of these items removed?
No.
Would any member of the public care to address any of these items before we bring it back? No? Before we bring it back to the council?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we will administer oaths of office to Mayor Turner and Councilmember Matina for their 2018 to 2022 terms. Kelly, is that you?
That's me. So just very quickly, at this time of year, we are normally accepting election results. However, the council, having only two incumbents for two seats, the council at the August 21st meeting adopted the resolution appointing Maria Turner and Stacy Matina. And so now it is time for them to officially take their new seats and their new terms. And then we will introduce them to the alter of office. I'm sorry about that. So if you could stand? All right. Raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Stacy Matina. Maria Turner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
That's it. You got it.
Thank you. Our next item is nomination and election of mayor and mayor pro temp for a period of one year.
Madam Mayor, I would like to add Mr. Barnes as mayor. Mr. Barnes? Oh, I think it's Barnes.
Are there any other nominations? With that, all in favor of Tim Barnes for mayor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, accept nominations for mayor pro temp?
I would like to nominate George Spur for mayor pro temp. I planned on doing that before he nominated me for mayor. I should make that clear.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for mayor pro temp? Okay, then. All in favor of George Spur for mayor pro temp?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That's it. So now you guys switch and sit where you want. It starts now.
It starts now. I just wanted to say, I really enjoyed my year as mayor. Gave me serious street cred. One of the things that I really like also is that our city staff is continually supportive of the council members and our ideas and our suggestions and our priorities. And it really doesn't matter if we are mayor or council member. So although I feel like I'm leaving the cool kid club, I'm still really excited to continue for another four years as a council member. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Maria. I hope I do, you know, have as good as you did as mayor. So our next section would be public input. Any person may speak for up to three minutes about any subject within the authority of the city council that is not already on tonight's agenda. Do we have any requests for it?
We do. And I just want to say that there are a couple here that want to speak to committee and commission appointments, but they can speak when that item is heard by the council.
Mayor Pro Temp. Councilmembers. I'm Suzanne Russell, former planning commission, former traffic and safety commission, former parks and rec commission. And I'm still on the main street, so you can't get rid of me yet. That one hopefully isn't voted on. My comment is that I am aware that there's only, things have changed. It used to be that when you were applying for a commission, that you had your entire body that would be voting on whoever the applicants would be based on their experience, et cetera, et cetera. And that has changed. And now it is one or two or three people that are choosing all the commissions, committees, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think that that is neither fair nor is it fair to the community because one or two or three people are making the decisions for everything. And so I just want to make that comment. And I think that's indicated by the fact that I did not reapply for the planning commission, which I'm a senior member and I've served for over eight years, around eight years, whatever. I don't, I lose track. And now I see that I'm being replaced with not one, not two, but three brand-new inexperienced people that are going to be on the planning commission. And two of the, well, three of us are off, but the other two are quite capable and quite reliable and good people to be on the planning commission because they know what's going on. Now we have the same situation going with parks and rec, we have new people, and sometimes they're not showing up. There's been only two meetings since the last election because people haven't shown up. And, I don't know, I just think it's important that it's handled differently and it goes back to the way it was, where all of this body makes the decision. And it's just not in a little room being interviewed by a couple of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Kurt Ackerman?
My name is Kurt Ackerman. I live here in Lakeport. And I want to, there's only got three minutes, I'm going to give you a short version of this. There's been a, I live on Page Drive, and there's been a Dodge truck on Page Drive that hasn't run for two years. Now, there's a black car that the same owner has brought in that has been there since the middle of summer, and it hasn't moved or it doesn't run. And for the last two years, I've tried to get something done with this, get this taken care of, get it moved, give them tickets, whatever it takes to clean this light up. I complained for two years. I've had two neighbors that I know have also complained. Nothing has been done. And I want to give you a little bit of background on this truck. Like I said, truck's been parked there for two years, has no current registration, which is, I think, a vehicle code infraction. It probably has no insurance since it's been there for two years, which is also a vehicle code infraction. It's got a huge puddle of oil under it, so when it rains, it probably goes down the drain and goes into the lake. And I guess what really put me over the edge here, two weeks ago, right out in the middle of Page Drive, there's this owner working on this car over the weekend, pulling the engine out. So it's been there for two years, we haven't done anything. Now it has no widget. I don't know how long it's going to be there. It's going to be there for another two years, three years, five years. I have no idea. But it's affecting my neighborhood, it's affecting the value of my home. We shouldn't have to live, he lives five doors down from me, I shouldn't have to live and look at this every day. My neighbors in Page Drive shouldn't have to look at this every day. We have a real nice neighborhood, we try to keep this neighborhood up, and we have wonderful neighbors, and this guy is destroying that. And I guess another thing, we had our house for sale this last summer. Bad time to sell with the fires and stuff. We had one couple that came in, very interested in the house, she loved it, and they said, "Well, we're going to make an offer in your house or we're going to make an offer in Buckingham." And before that person left, her husband asked me one question. He says, "I see all these cars and vehicles parked all over these streets here in Lakeport." He says, "Don't they have any parking regulations?" And I said, "Yes, they do." I said, "But they don't enforce them." And after he left, I told my wife, I said, "That guy is going to make an offer on my house or our house," and he didn't. And so I guess this light, neighborhood light, is hurting my neighborhood and me directly and I guess indirectly, is really hurting Lakeport. And I would appreciate any help that I can get to get this resolved. And with that said, thank you for your understanding and have a Merry Christmas.
Is there any other public input at this time? Is that somebody saying they had? Okay.
My name is Ann Boruf. Do I need to sign in?
No.
Okay. I'm a longtime Lakeport resident, grew up here in 1962. All but five years of that was within the city limits. I've served on a number of committees and also I've been a commissioner also. I believe around seventeen years in traffic, traffic and safety. I've been on the, oh gosh, I hardly remember. Anyway, doesn't matter. I've been on quite a few different, served in several different ways, as well as Main Street Association. I'm still on that. And I think that's the only one I'm on right now. And I too, like the lady before me, Suzanne, am not at all happy with the way you determine the committee members or the commissioners from this body. I think it is very unfair to, in my case, announce the new members even before it came before you. I find that to be extremely unfair. I feel it's your responsibility to do that, not anyone else's. That's your duty, in my opinion. This last time that I came up, I decided not to run again. That was one of the reasons, not the only one, but certainly one of them. And I just felt that it was important to me for me to tell you that. I think you should reconsider. I think you should, I personally think that first you hear about it, other than the fact that we are applying for the position, is to have the interview from the desk there, not from two people only and three people doing it. And that's the main thing that I'd like to say. I've enjoyed everything that I've done. I think it was like seventeen years in one job, and I was proud of everything that we accomplished. Thank you very much.
Was there any other public comment? We will now move on to new employee introductions. Introduction of new Lakeport Police Department Sergeant Michael Davis and new Public Works employee Hector. Can I get some help on that?
Heredia.
Heredia, thank you. And Cody Larsson. Do you want to go first or you want me to?
I can go first. Yeah, Cody and Hector here. Come on up, guys. Council, I can introduce you to our new Public Works employees. This is Cody. Cody is working with the Public Works Road Department. He's a new maintenance worker. And Hector is working with Public Works, but in our utilities department as a utilities construction worker. And they're filling up some open spots that we had. We're really happy to have them on board. They've already jumped in with both feet, being very productive and learning the ways of how our organizations work, and we have high hopes for both of them. And so I would just like to introduce you and so that you know their faces.
Mayor and council and city staff and members of the public, I wanted to introduce you today to Michael Davis, who is our new police sergeant. He was actually sworn in yesterday. Mike comes to us with over twenty-two years of previous law enforcement experience that also includes previous time as a police sergeant at a previous agency. He also has a very extensive amount of advanced California Post certified training. He's also a veteran of both the United States Army and the California Army National Guard. And he has advanced education as well in public administration and emergency services management. So as you're aware, we've been recruiting for quite some time, over a year, to fill this advisory position, and we believe Mike is a good fit for our agency, and we're proud to have him on our team and look forward to working with him in our continued mission to protect the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be easier to recognize.
All right. Council business. Appointments to Lakeport Economic Development Advisory Committee LEAC. Sister Kelly?
Good evening, council. The city council did appoint an ad hoc selection committee to interview and make a recommendation to the city council, the various commissions and committees. So the LEAC, Lakeport Economic Development Advisory Committee, had four openings, and the ad hoc committee is recommending Denise Combs, William Eaton, Terry Logston, and Will DaShaw. And their applications and information are attached to the statement.
Thank you. I can't hear you.
Is your microphone on?
Yeah, it is on. I think people are talking up there.
So Kelly, for clarification, it says that we've got an ad hoc committee of the two council members and staff. Can you maybe clarify what kind of staff was there so that people can feel relieved that it wasn't just Stacy and Maria?
I believe the city manager was there, and the city clerk's office just did all the coordinating, but we did not sit in on the interviews.
And I sat in as adjunct for just...
Ex officio?
Ex officio, excuse me. That didn't come out right. Ex officio and the two council members actually, their decision on who gets appointed.
Well, maybe we should clarify too. We started doing the ad hoc committee because we found that people were not applying because they didn't want to come into this room and stand before everyone and get interviewed by five people. It was, we had very low turnout for all of the committees and commissions, and that was some of the feedback that we were given. And the awkwardness of finding out in front of the audience, you know, who was going to get it. So it was, it was making it, so people were not stepping forward to do it. So we've tried this out, and we have gotten quite a few more people applying for positions, and we're not seeing any open seats any longer.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just for clarification, this is an ad hoc committee, which means it's only advisory, you can only make recommendations, and the decision about who is appointed is the council's decision, a majority of the council's decision as a whole?
Thank you.
We had lively discussion, we had great interviews, people came in and shared quite a bit, we got to know people a lot better, we got to find out things that we never realized that our citizens have to offer and want to do on some of these committees. And then we were able to have, you know, lively discussion of what fits the vision of the council and the priorities of the goals that we've set, and that's kind of what drove all those discussions.
I was on the ad hoc committee last year, and I found it extremely difficult to choose these people because they all had a willingness that they wanted to do this, and they all were basically qualified. It's very hard for me to say, yes, we'll take this one instead of that one. And it is, it is a difficult decision to make. And that's one reason I didn't do it this year. But the question I would have is, our ad hoc committee, is it going to be just for the end of this year, or are we going to reelect a new one or talk about it at least next year for?
What you did last year was you elected two members to be the ad hoc committee. And this year, you brought that to council again.
Right.
For ad hoc committee members. So I'm assuming we'll do that again.
Do it again. At least have some sort of conversation about it sometime in the middle of the year or sometime?
Yes, before we appoint the next, before you council appoint the next ad hoc committee.
Okay. Yeah, just to add, I remember vividly the situation last year where there was a lot of default positions where people didn't come in, and we discussed it quite a bit about the situation where people weren't applying, and there was some discussion about the fact they felt uncomfortable, they didn't want to be singled out as being the losers or whatever you want to call it, the people that did not win. And we were trying to discuss ways to get more candidates, and it was almost like we were just going down the list and just rubber stamping whoever applied. And we decided as a group that the best way to do that would be to go out and let people come in in more of a clandestine situation, where they could come in and they could talk and they could let it all hang out without the thing. Because a lot of people don't realize, eighty percent of the public would rather burn up in a fire than speak publicly. So, I mean, maybe they shouldn't be on a commission, but at the same time, they'd like to come in and do what they can do in the planning commission where maybe there isn't fifty people in there, there's only like eight or nine unless there's a big, you know, marijuana cannabis issue. But I think that the move was a very, was a very good thing, and I think that the results and the amount of people that have applied has done exactly what we wanted to do, was bring a lot of people out, a lot of new blood and hear about what they want to do and how they want to do it. So casting dispersions at the process, I can understand that it seems different, but sometimes different is better and sometimes it's progress. So I want to let the ad hoc committee know that we appreciate all the work, interviewing, and there's probably a lot more interviewing going on there and some tough questions than would be up here from the DA's. So I think it was a great idea.
I think rather than clandestine, I would have gone with relaxed. Maybe more intimate.
That was my attempt.
That's what I was going for. Yeah.
Anything else from council? Were you opening up for public comment?
Tina Scott, county supervisor. Actually, just have a question. Because I brought up the agenda up online, and so do all the council members, do you have all the applications in front of you, so you know who all has applied?
Yes. Okay. Along those lines, one of the things that we dealt with being up here and not being able to do the interviews is that some of the applications are so incomplete and so, you know, they're just like, yeah, I've been in Lake County for this, and I love the city, and I think I'll do a good job. And it's like, okay, continue. Well, we don't get to do that when we get the application written to us, and that's what we got previously. So the interviewing process, they can actually go through and dig deeper and find out, well, okay, you remember Lake, you know, Lakeport, and you're going to make a difference. How are you going to make a difference? What things do you feel are important to the city? Do you understand the most important thing that citizens believe are important to them? Do you understand those? And so I think that the way we were
And so I think that the way we were doing it before, we get this thing thrown at us, you know, with four or five days, and we read through it, and some of these applications are just so incomplete and don't have very much information at all. I mean, I really appreciate the people that say, see attached, and then you actually have a page. But I mean, I would hate to summarize my appreciation for the city of Lakeport in like one little box, you know, that's, you know, don't use over 200 characters, you know, like it was a Twitter feed or something. So I think that this process of interviewing is a much better way to go, and I would encourage people that want to get on committees and commissions to see attached, and don't be afraid to use more than one page, because we need to know who you are. And believe me, I read through all these things in here, and I didn't see anything to really make me want to change my mind with the ad hoc committee, but I think that the other way, a lot of people just throw their name in because they knew that there was only going to be five candidates and they were going to win. And now it's different, so.
Is there any other public comments? All right, we'll bring it back to council. Any further?
Are we going to do these one at a time, or are we doing these all five?
I think there's a suggested...
For each one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, there's...
You don't mean each?
But each, each position?
No, 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 I'm saying each, each position, like planning commission, we'll do that separate?
Yes.
So if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion?
I almost said Madam Mayor.[693.12][693.12](laughter) Mr. Mayor. Member 24, Denise Combs, William Eaton, Terry Logston, and Will DeShaw to the Lakeport Economic Development Committee effective January 1st, 2019, with terms expiring December 31st, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right. Now, same thing for Measure Z. Let me get back to my agenda. Sorry, I'm new at this.[735.12][735.12](laughter) Yes, you are.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to appoint two members of the Measure Z Advisory Committee effective January 1st, 2019, with the expiration date of December 31st, 2022.
I think we have to talk about it first.
Oh.
Yeah, we have to talk about each one individually.
Go for it.
All right.
I revoke that.
So revoke.
There was no second.
Appointments to the Measure Z Advisory Committee. Kelly?
Just real quickly, same process. There, there were two seats? Yes, excuse me. There are two seats available for this commission, and unfortunately, I got the wrong attachment in my staff report. We have, I think, three or four...
Five.
Five. And so the ad hoc committee is recommending appointing Susan King and Vernash Shaffer to the Measure Z Advisory Committee. Are you going to tell us who the other candidate's for?
Just so the public would have an idea?
Yes, it's in the staff report. Let me pull it up, because I got the wrong attachment.
Do you want me to give it to you?
Yes.
Peter Dodson, and Susan Val McVerde, and Timothy Wynott, in addition to the two that were recommended. Let's go ahead and open this to the public. Is there any public comment on the Measure Z appointments? All right. Appointments to the public. Anything further from council? If there's nothing further, we'll...
And here we go again. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to appoint Susan King and Vernash Shaffer to the Measure Z Advisory Committee effective January 1st, 2019, with terms expiring on December 31st, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Appointments to the Lakeport Planning Commission.
Okay, so the same process. The applicants for the planning commission were Brandon Disney, Jerry Driver, Michael Froyo, Kip Nor, and... Is that it? Mark Mitchell. And so the recommendation from the ad hoc committee was to appoint Brandon Disney, Jerry Driver, and Mark Mitchell.
Anything from council? Open for public comment?
New Mayor, Chairman Barnes, congratulations. I was not selected by the ad hoc, as anybody that did their homework knows, and I'm not happy about it. And I wrote down some thoughts, and, because I didn't want to ramble on here, and I'm hoping that you'll allow me the time to read what I wrote. My two-year term replacing City Councilmember George Spur on the Planning Commission comes to an end at the end of this month. I am here tonight to ask the city council for my term to be extended for four more years. I have served the city council and the people of Lakeport proudly and faithfully. I pick up my city work each month, study the material, and as often as possible. I've gone to each potential job site before meeting. I have very good attendance. I put in 10, 12 hours each month for a sum of $50 a month. That's $46 after taxes. I listen closely to staff, applicants, fellow commissioners, and to public input. I always come fully prepared. I raise questions about my concerns and listen to others before making any final decisions about land use within our city. I bring other skills and life experience to the job of planning commissioner. As you may know, I was asked by CCD Kevin Ingram to apply for this job two years ago. He asked me to reapply again before the deadline. When I started on the planning commission, I was leading our neighborhood watch group and cleaning up the north side of this city. In this job, I often worked with homeowners and landlords, city, county, and state officials. As you can imagine, some government employees are not helpful at all, but I used everyone willing to help. I worked with law enforcement and code enforcement to push out transients living in our parking lots and abandoned buildings in our neighborhood. I babysat red-tagged buildings late at night and called the sheriff's department to ask for arrests. I dismantled the open bathroom in the nearby RV park that was frequented by the homeless. I have called law enforcement to tow or ticket cars of drug dealers without California driver's licenses or current registration, all in an effort to apply economic pressure and drive out local drug dealers. Although the work is not quite completed, my neighborhood is greatly improved. I have helped the recent victim of the RV fire with cash, and I put him in contact with a landlord that's going to place him in a cabin nearby on our street. I am more than a little surprised by the ad hoc committee's decision to recommend three other potential applicants over this sitting planning commissioner. Please ask yourselves how candidates can have more experience than someone actually doing the job for two years that they have not performed. Our meetings often run three and a half to four hours. When you're new, it takes a little while to find your way. I still have a lot to learn, but I'm proud of my contributions to the planning commission. I was interviewed by ad hoc. I was not happy. I enclosed a one-page letter with my application. Unfortunately, I was being asked about information that I had already taken the time to give them in writing. When I asked all three members of ad hoc if they read my letter, they all admitted no one did. My application does read, see attached. My letter outlined why I wanted to reapply and my qualifications. I had to ask each member to please read my letter before we continued. Then I was told that we were, they were struggling because their questions were tailored for new applicants. If I sound cranky, I'm really cranky. They were not intended for returning commissioners. The interview process for me wasn't fair or transparent. The decisions were already decided against me long before my interview. Just because I can't prove it doesn't mean it's not true. This is my perception. I have always considered each project on its own merits. I look for common sense solutions that we can all live with, but I don't just bend to conform with the majority. I am not a rubber stamp. If I believe this community is headed in the wrong direction, I expect to be able to voice my opinion without fear of this kind of retribution. I ask the city council to reject the ad hoc committee's biased finding and grant me four more years of service on the planning commission. Before you vote tonight, I'd like an explanation. I think everyone in the room would like an explanation and want to know the reason why I was not recommended by ad hoc. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barnes. I wanted to extend a thanks to Michael Froyo for his two years of service on the planning commission. He is definitely not afraid to make a hard decision. He has been, for quite a number of years, a very effective, very powerful, and very passionate advocate for his neighborhood, and Supervisor Scott and I have been fortunate enough to have two tours of the neighborhood. The first to talk about what was wrong, the second to get a really exciting update about the differences that have taken place in that neighborhood. It's been, like Mr. Froyo said, a considerable group effort, but it wouldn't have happened without his constant vigilance and his continually being that sweepy wheel that we needed to keep that focus on that area. So he has done great things. That being said, if I could offer a little bit as far as explanation for my basis for decision-making and recommending the three that we did, is I consider that everyone has a year one when they sign up for an advisory board or a commission. That includes the planning commission. And yes, the additional experience as people progress is valuable. However, to me, it is not the single most compelling reason to reappoint and reappoint. I was very impressed with all the people who interviewed, and I wouldn't really say we struggled with questions. It was more like we were, we had the ability to leave a list of just suggested opening questions to actually have a more in-depth conversation with repeating or returning That being said, I am fully confident that the three that we did recommend, although they are all starting their year one, are more than capable of doing that steep learning curve for planning commission, just as our current and past planning commissioners have all done. I see the same drive, I see the same work ethic, and I support our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who was the other ad hoc member?
I was.
That was Stacy and I.
Did you have anything to say, Stacy?
Well, I think I already said it. We were very focused on, on what is our vision as a council, what are the goals that we've set, and having people that really felt that, saw that vision.
I was kind of curious, something that Michael said, that he asked if you had read his page.
We had interviews stacked up, so sometimes we, we had all of them write all the letters and applications right when we went in the room. So depending, instead of making them wait, we sometimes would have the next person come in and then, and read after we, you know, asked questions or during that time. We read everybody's information, but we didn't want to keep them waiting out there, so just depending, you know, we were very flexible.
So, maybe I'm a little confused. I thought that all of you got all of the applications and all of you reviewed...
They're in the packet, which came after.
After?
Correct.
After the decision?
There's no decision, there's a recommendation.
Oh, okay, all right. But you did get to see all the applicants and all this?
Absolutely.
All right, okay. Well, the...
Actually, I don't have Mark Mitchell's in my packet. His application, at least not that I can see, unless this blank one was supposed to be his, because I have one with it blanked out and there's nothing on it. But anyway, that's just a...
I apologize. Am I even in error in the packet? I apologize.
Just so everybody got to see the applicants, all the information, that's all I'm concerned about. I was recommended over eight years ago to, by Harold Taylor, who was on the commission for, I think, almost 30 years. And as an investor, and I would take horrible-looking houses and fix them up and make them pretty, and I've made a fairly decent contribution to this town in 24 years of doing this, I would like to say, reiterate, that Michael Froyo and Kip Nor are both contractors. They're both fine planning commissioners, and I, I really am shocked that the recommendation was made for new blood, because it takes a lot of time to get the hang of the planning commission. I mean, Mr. Ingram is fabulous, and he's very patient, and he is very communicative, and there's just so much stuff that we deal through. I mean, you guys do 10 times what we do, and I think, you know, we go through an amazing amount, especially with the candidates this year. That was just, you know, many, numerous, four-and-a-half-hour meetings and period by period and detail by detail. It does take a lot of time, and a lot of people have put a lot of energy into this, and I just wanted to voice my objection to the fact that Michael Froyo's was not considered and, or was considered and rejected, whatever, and Mr. Nor. I mean, I just, I'm totally floored. Thank you. And I also did not apply because I did not want to be judged by two people. I don't think it's fair. I have no problem. If somebody has a problem with public speaking, they'd better not be on the planning commission. Excuse me, but that's ridiculous.
Thank you.
I try not to go to planning commission meetings because they're really long, but I know the last meeting I was at, I think my husband Bill and I were the only two people who were there who weren't on the planning commission. And I'm kind of interested whether these people who you're choosing have gone to a lot of planning commission meetings? Have they been in there for the last year, sitting there, and are they so dedicated that they've actually gone to a meeting and know what's going on and done their homework? I know when I ran for city council, I attended every meeting for the year before I was on the council, so that I would know what I was talking about. And I'm really interested, is that a question you ask them, and did those people come to the meetings? Or are they just interested in being on the commission? And I agree with Suzanne, if you're not willing to stand up in public and be able to at least say, this is who I am and this is why I want to do it, then maybe you shouldn't do it. Certainly, you have to be able to stand up and say what, what you think and be able to have opinions, and I know that the opinion on the street was that Michael Froyo would not be chosen.
Hello?
Yvonne Jones. I just, I'm going to kick myself if I don't talk. I have to say this kind of to Kenny. I have a company, and one of the first lines of the gauntlet was the application. And if somebody didn't fill it in completely and it was a detailed job, then you didn't want them, because they didn't follow detail. So I have to agree that the gauntlet... And if somebody didn't fill it in completely and it was a detailed job, then you didn't want them because they didn't follow detail. So I have to agree that the gauntlet, if you want to call it to get to where you want to be, is, would be standing up in front of people and also the application process. And I also wanted to say, I'm surprised. I'm kind of getting into politics more and a little bit more about it. You guys have very long meetings. You guys have a lot on your plate. But I have known Michael Froyo for 20 years. And he has always been a very conscientious, very intelligent person that doesn't make snap decisions. And I have always had a great amount of respect for him. And that's not true with everybody. So, I mean, anyways, I am surprised. I've tried to picture in my head what it'll be like with almost all new people on the planning commission because you guys have a lot of different things and sayings. See how much I know. But, you know, I watch you guys. It takes some time. So I'm wondering how those meetings will be. But I know there's a lot of work that gets fed into it. I don't know the other applicants that you guys interviewed, but I do know Michael. And I thought he was doing a great job on the planning commission. So, a lot to say.
I have to agree with a lot that has been said. I know for myself, I've been a supervisor for two years and there definitely is a learning curve with anything that you step into. So I am surprised that you're picking new people. I have had the opportunity to meet with Michael, and I was blown away with how much he loved his community to the point where he was going out and making a change and a difference. And like Councilmember Turner said, it was quite a difference from the first time going and walking his community to the second time to see the work he had done, the passion that he has about the community. I have not found anybody like him. And I just wanted to stand up and say that. And I support him. And I hope he continues to do great work in our community because Lakeport is what we need. We need people like him that will go above and beyond the work to make our community better.
Welcome to council, Mr. Mayor. I believe I interviewed for my planning commission post, Michael Green. I am on the planning commission. That was awkward. So first things first about the process is I'm okay with the process. The idea that you would have a subcommittee to do some of the heavy lifting, interview the candidates, it is kind of hard to do it in a public setting. And at the end of the day, whatever you do, whether you're doing it as a public body and holding the popularity contest one by one here in a public setting, or if you're kind of doing it in a committee setting and then bringing back a recommendation for adoption, at the end of the day, you're still going to get this kind of popularity contest kind of thing. So I know you've taken some criticism over the process. I wanted to focus on that and say, I've seen that work well in many other communities. I'm okay with the process. It is surprising the recommendations that came forward. And so one reason I'm supporting the process is you have a decision to make tonight. You do have the subcommittee's, AdHoc committee's recommendations, but ultimately, this body is going to make the decision. I can tell you, I've been at the planning commission meetings where we've had a packed house and we've had enough of crickets for three or four hours at a time. I can tell you Commissioner Froyo has been dutiful and passionate about what he wants to get done. Commissioner Nor has been very helpful during the time he serves. And that is something that has a whole lot you may wish to consider. And hopefully you do. Because I think to get somebody who actually spends me out of time and reads our reports, which do get quite sick, and is willing to sit and kind of plow through these things, you know, and they've demonstrated their commitment to doing that, I think that's important. Having said that, it basically is an appointment. We're not running for office. There is no default position that the incumbents get to get reappointed. Otherwise, why do the committee, we'll just go back to the little revolving chair and appoint everybody every four years. So this, I think, is probably your decision at this point. From my perspective on the commission, both of the incumbents have served very well. That is not to say that bringing in new blood is a bad thing either. I think that's how I ended up on the planning commission. I'm very happy to see you here, Mayor Barnes. As you recall, I'm a veteran against you. And if you want to be humbled, lose the guy named Cheese. But I'm very proud of you. And I have learned from that experience. And I think even if the incumbents don't get reappointed, I'm very confident that Mr. Froyo and Mr. Nor will continue to serve this community as best they can. So it's a learning experience in terms of the process. And I think this particular choice is going to be a little more difficult than the last two of the commission's work. So good luck with that. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? All right. Bring it back to council for discussion.
Well, I have to say that I was among the group that was shocked. And I cannot say anything other than I would not do anything that would exclude Michael Froyo from the planning commission. In other words, he's been, he came to me long before he was a planning commissioner because he cared about the city. And what I know about him and what he's done, he is exactly the kind of guy that I think we need on the planning commission. And the one thing that was probably the most difficult and almost humiliating thing is when he knew that he didn't like the idea of the Dollar General. He did not like it. The laws, the laws said, "You can't say that. You can't say that because they legally are allowed to be here." And everything, everybody outside of the city of Lakeport and everywhere going, "How could you let them come in?" We can't deny them to come in. But Michael stood up and said, "It doesn't feel right to me." And, you know, we all thought it didn't feel right, but we didn't have any legislation or any rules or any laws to keep them out. He said that. And that was like, hey, you can't say that if you're a planning commissioner. You need to go by the laws. But I will not vote with the group if Michael Froyo is not in the group. I don't know where that takes us. But I want Michael Froyo to stick around. That would be my vote. And I'm sorry, and I know that this has been a very difficult process for everybody. And this is not to cast any dispersions about what the, you know, the AdHoc committee did because I have the highest, utmost respect. But I think that Michael coming here and demanding to be on it, I mean, it just shows that this guy wants to do right by the city. And he is dedicated beyond, you know, probably anybody else other than the other two guys who are sticking around. Because my God, those six-hour meetings, I don't know how you do it. And the learning curve, and I agree with Suzanne Lyons. When they get here and they're on their first meeting that goes three or four hours, they're going to say, "What in the hell happened to me? I should have never asked for this commission." And these guys have been there and done that. And I'm all about Michael Froyo staying on board. So I don't know where else it takes us, but I want him to be around, in my opinion.
So you don't think the 46 bucks is worth it? I agree with Kenny. I'd like to see Michael on the planning commission. And it goes back to the AdHoc. I have the utmost respect for them. They did the best they can. They read everything. They did everything. It's, they did a good job. But Michael, he has a passion, you know?
Well, I would just add to that, that we spent a lot of time interviewing a lot of really good people with great qualifications. And I think we asked some very specific questions that had to do with the priorities that the council has set out. And I think the planning commission is one of the most important commissions that understands what our priorities are as far as being business-friendly and the visions that we have. And based on, you know, the questions and the answers that we got, that's how we made our decision.
It was a tough decision and, excuse me, I've got this itchy throat now. Having a huge level of respect and appreciation for Mr. Froyo's advocacy in the community, to me, was definitely taken into consideration. So, but I will stand by the recommendation of AdHoc committee as it is listed.
I'm just wondering, I'm looking at my packet here, Kelly, and I have one application with no name.
I apologize.
Michael Mitchell.
Yeah. I mean, I can take the time to go get that one. But there was an error in the packet. He did provide a nice written statement about his qualifications. I believe he has a.
Lake County Contractors is his company. He has done significant rebuilds since Valley Fire, then onto Menino, then into Sedoma. During our interview, we discussed his master's in planning as well as his variety of ways that he has been involved in very complicated planning projects through the years. Thank you. Those were all taken into consideration.
That's it? That's the application?
But if we'd like to take a break for a minute to get a paper copy so that.
We can. There was just an error in the packet. I'm happy to get that.
I've already read it. It's four lines long.
Oh, you have it?
He has it from online now. It's not in the packet, but.
Tim, do you want to take a break?
Yeah. We can take a break so we can get a paper copy of that. Do I have to bang the gavel or anything?
Maybe say, take a two-minute, five-minute break.
We were presented with a printed copy of the application for appointment. Is it available to the public? This was on the city website.
Yes, it was on the website.
It just didn't come along.
And the Dropbox didn't work. So we don't have a copy now?
Yeah.
All right. Is there any other, is there further comment from council?
Well, my only comment is that we have three vetted choices here that were made by the AdHoc committee, and they all appear to be imminently qualified. Two of us would like to see Michael Froyo on there. If the mayor is deciding the vote, then we would have to, if he goes with us, then of course, we would have to eliminate one of the other ones, which makes it kind of difficult in a way to kind of go through all of that minutia and detail right now. And I think that's part of what we were trying to avoid. But if you make the decision, then of course, we'll go against it. So it kind of depends on where you sit right now.
Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Kenny. Yeah, right. I would like to see Michael Froyo continue on the planning commission. He sits up and he shows up. And I really like that about him. He stops me after meetings and talks to me. And he's got that passion that we need in these committees. I, you know, I trust your judgment. I really do. I really do. But I just can't, I just can't not put him back on the planning commission.
I appreciate the input. It's been stated numerous times before, the AdHoc committee is only there to make recommendations to the council. And so, given our discussion, which has been very helpful and significant public input, I'd like to offer a motion. I would move that, where's my motion? I would move to appoint Michael Froyo, Jerry Driver, and Mark Mitchell to the planning commission to terms effective January 1st, 2019, and expiring December 31st, 2022.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Drinks on hand. Thank you.
Right? Show up and make noise and we listen. That's how this is supposed to work, right? Appointments to the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee.
So for the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, I believe we did end up having just three applicants for the three positions. You know, however, the AdHoc committee did determine that they wanted to recommend these folks and we're presenting them for you tonight.
Thank you. Any comment from council? Any public comment? Bring it back to council for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to appoint Ashley Barrett, David Brown, and Vicki Cole to the Traffic Safety Committee, effective January 1st, 2019, and expire on December 31st, 2022.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Appointments to Park and Recreation Commission.
So for the Park and Recreation Commission, we did have two seats vacant. There were three applicants. And the AdHoc committee was recommending applicants Wayne Yonkey and Lynn Andre to the Park and Recreation Commission.
Any discussion from council?
Suzanne Lyons. I'm going to do my Michael Froyo. I've been on the Parks and Rec Commission for a number of years now. When I was on the city council, I also attended the meetings. One of the things that was a complaint about the Parks and Rec Commission last year when you were choosing new Parks and Rec commissioners was that we didn't do anything. Well, the one thing that we have actually been working on for quite some time, that is an actual real thing that you can look at and put your hands on, is the walking path. I'm the only commissioner right now that has any idea of what the walking path is about. Ann Blue came to me when I was on the city council, and she had an idea for getting some walking trails through Lakeport. And five years ago, we got a little grant that fell in our laps when we were working on trying to do a walking path. And Ann Blue and I were on the committee that was working on putting this path together. Ann got taken off the commission last year. So I was kind of working by myself. We had three fairly new commissioners, two brand-new ones, who knew nothing about the path, one of whom apparently really, really, really wanted to be on this commission. However, he's only been to two meetings this year. So I think that looking at people who are willing to do the work and willing to come and willing to meet is important. I know the way you're characterizing how this used to go on, but I've applied for a lot of commissions and I've been on a lot of commissions. And usually, what you did was send in a letter, and then the people who were interested showed up and came in and said, "Do you have any questions for me?" Now people are being appointed and you don't even know who they are. One of the appointees to this commission, I've never seen this person before. I would think that if you really wanted to be on this commission, you would at least attend one meeting, maybe two, and show that you had some interest. Right now, there are some issues with the sign for the walking path. I know who they are. Nobody else does. So I'm hoping that you'll at least put me back on long enough to get the problems ironed out and get this walking path finished. But it's not just the walking path. There are plenty of things that go on that may not be action items, but there are information that people in the city need to know about their parks. And right now, you have one commissioner. If you appoint the commissioners that are being recommended, you'll have one commissioner that has any kind of history other than old meetings.
Any other public comment? I see you.
Good evening again. As you know, I'm Michael. Thank you. Thank you all. I'd like to thank the people that spoke up for me tonight. I really appreciate all of you. I met Suzanne Lyons in her shop. I didn't realize how active she was in the community. And I got talking to her one day, and I don't know if you remember, but we must have spent more than two hours talking. Her passion for the community is also to be admired. And I would put a lot of weight in what she's saying. I think you all know that she's been a giver for a really long time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Michael. Any further public comment?
To mention too, that Lynn Andre, under, she used to be on the planning commission for a long time. She quit in the process of the school board, and then wanted to come back and apply, so she does have the experience. What did I say? Oh, I meant Parks and Rec, excuse me. You know, Parks and Rec, so she does have the experience. And Lynn is our, he's here too.
Congratulations again on your second appointment, second four years, everybody. I just want to say that on that, pertaining to the walking trail that Suzanne was talking about, I know Anne Blue was very disappointed not to be put back on the commission. She's been on it for, I think, 13 years, Parks and Rec. And I think it's taken, correct me if I wrong, five or six years for us to get that trail into its completion? And we just got the sign. And I'm talking five or six years of meetings just to get one thing done. And now you're proposing to have a Parks and Rec Commission with, I believe, one person that has the experience? I'm sorry, but I don't agree with having all this new blood because nobody knows anything. I mean, it's hard enough for us with the new rules. And I spoke out for my colleagues about having monthly meetings like we've done for like, I don't know how many years, I mean, forever. And it's on the, on the city, you know, what do I want to say? The city site tells, says that we're there once a month. There's even a state of time. But since then, I think they've had maybe, I don't know how many meetings, very, very, very few, since things have changed and we have the new blood on there because nobody's coming. And so they don't have meetings. And we don't have a meeting but every two or three months. And I think Stacy was proposing quarterly. Well, if it takes us five or six years to get a trail marked and put through so that we have people have a walking path for people to be able to follow in the park, then can you imagine what it's going to take to do anything at all? If we have nobody with experience and nobody to push some things forward? So, in that case, I'm assuming that Suzanne is running for the Parks and Rec Commission. And I would, she's one of the few people in this town that will speak up and try to get something done. I don't know that there's many people that have more experience than her. She's sat where you guys are for numerous years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I don't think I have to introduce myself, but Anne Blue. And I was on the Park and Rec as a commissioner. And we came before this body fighting for more frequent meetings. And all three of us have lost our positions for some reason. Not necessarily in Park and Rec, but... What I want to say is, when we fought so hard to get that, it was because of the length of time and that we had already spent, and yet still had more to do. And yet, I was let, I was let go, two of us were, because we had spoken for that. I feel that that's part of the reason, maybe, that we weren't approved for the next time around. Whether that's true or not, that's exactly how we felt. So I really wasn't on the committee for the ending, and I felt that was really unjust. Because we had put in hours and hours and hours. I couldn't even, I wish we'd kept track of it. We walked and walked and walked, tried to come up with the best path to take. And I did, I did most of the walking at that time because Suzanne was dealing with a problem. And, I mean, we did it out of love, really. We wanted that path so bad. I had dreamed of it for years and years, even before I was on the path. Even long before I was on any committee or commission. I had dreamed of a path or a trail through Lakeport. And so, I don't know how many streets I walked, looking for one that was walkable, that was something that would accommodate all people, not just us ones that were able to walk and get around, but our disabled people as well. And I tried, first we went through some neighborhoods. We wanted people to see not only the downtown, but also parts of the neighborhood. And that was a real challenge because of the lack of sidewalks and that type of thing. But nevertheless, we walked and looked and made quite a few adjustments as time went by. Because as you walk and you try the different areas to stay downtown, you still have to make some decisions. And one of the things that I in particular wanted was a crosswalk at Ninth Street because it was far enough, it was a nice wide street to begin with, from Forks to Main. And I, it just, I just thought that was a nice way to go. But we couldn't do that because it's not, it's a T, which means that we weren't able to have a crosswalk where the street was a T, not through. So there were little things like that, that we had no way of knowing. But we had good, we had good help from Doug and from our different people who knew more than we did. We had dreams, but they had the reality sometimes that we just didn't happen to know about. But anyway, we finally got our one bench in place, and we finally got most of it done. But there was still some work that, that I could, felt that it would have been good for me to still be on the, on the commission, as a commissioner at that time. But anyway, I just wanted to let you know that it was really a labor of love and hard work. And we spent many, many hours working on it. And I think we did a pretty good job.
Absolutely.
But it did take us a long time. And now it's just to get the word out so that everybody knows that it is there. And of course, if you live here in Lakeport, you know where everything is and don't really need someone to tell you where you can walk, because you can walk anyplace you want to or can. But we have visitors, it would sure be nice for them to know. Especially if the husband's out fishing all day and the wives are here and you're looking for something to do.
Outreach with that is absolutely going to be the next phase. And I think it's a wonderful thing that you helped build for the people of Lakeport and the people who come and visit.
Well, thank you, and what's a nice thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? Wayne? Absolutely.
So, my name's Wayne Yankee. I am one of the nominations from the ad hoc committee, and I am excited about this opportunity. I could go a list of the long things that I've done in the past, but I'm just going to focus on the last 12 months. So in the last 12 months, working with city individuals, different organizations, I've secured donations for Westside Community Park and Rotary Field, $100 of premium topsoil, which helped rehab the parks with the work of Doug and his team. So I've done that already. I worked with the Westside Park Committee and the Soccer League and the Baseball League to come up with a plan with the rest of the community and lots of donations and so on and so forth to build and finish and finalize a per-minute building on Westside Community Park that is now a snack shack that is already generating revenue for the Soccer League and soon to be the Baseball League of Springs. Let's see, what else? So then I also secured sponsorship in the way of monetary value to purchase and replace the barrier nets along the Rotary Field chain link fence, these big tall nylon nettings, and we raised it two feet so that the balls aren't going into the street when the kids are kicking the soccer ball. So, our intention is to leave those there throughout the year so that everybody can use them when they're out there on the soccer fields. As the president of Canockdale Soccer League, we leave our goals out there for the park all the time. And that's a decision we make. And they're utilizing the park regularly, but they technically belong to our nonprofit. So that's just one of the things that we do then. Over the last four to five months, I've been working with a group of individuals to put together a grant writing team for Prop 68 in hopes that we can finally secure some funds next year to finish Phase 3 of Westside Community Park. That has turned into a multi-headed monster, and it really looks like we're on the track for that to be happening this next year. So super excited about that. If I'm pointing to this committee, those labors of love that are already happening in the community without being on any committee or commission, rather, are still going to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not to mention haunted Lake County.
Yeah, that too.
That's for the 12 months.
You did this year, though.
Good evening, I'm Bill Graham. I've sat in on Parks and Rec for several years now. One of the things I do know is that the walking path that was put out has some mistakes in it, and it was not put out with any city funds. It was actually raised privately through businesses. And I don't even know if the Parks and Rec Commission has the information that was put out on it. So, that's one of the things that you'd be losing if you don't have Suzanne back on. Thank you.
That was a grant from Southern Lakeside, that project.
Right, but the, the, that pamphlet that came out, the actual walking path, wasn't from those funds.
I'm actually hoping that we can get that walking path map in our Destinations magazine. So it'll have wide distribution for anybody who's in Lake County.
Hopefully a corrected version.
The accurate version, yes, that would be awesome.
But... So, okay. Is there any other public comment? All right, we'll bring it back to council.
First thing I'd like to state is, in the document, it has me as on the ad hoc committee. And I don't know if that needs to be changed or not because I wasn't through this year. And the second thing I'd like to say is, experience is a very good thing to have on a committee, so keep that in mind.
So are you dodging the question? So I know I'm going to regret this. You know, half the time when Suzanne Lyons comes in, and I'm going to be absolutely candid, I'm just shaking my head going, "Here we go again." Because Suzanne does not always have the nicest things to say about staff or the city council. And, you know, I'm always thinking, I know that when she was up here, she did a better job. And I know that she's going to cast dispersions at the way we did something, and here we go again. But being on a number of other different leadership positions and roles, I believe the contention is good. And I think people need to shake it up. And I will say that being on, you know, all the committees with Stacy and everything, going LTA and APC and LAFCO. Matter of fact, she was the one that said, "Hey, there was nobody from Lakeport at the LAFCO meeting because she was there and we weren't," because she's the alternate. And we didn't get the memo, and that's truth. We didn't get the memo. And so that's been rectified. But like her or not, she is busy all the time doing something or another. A lot of time it's, you know, the B-word. And that's bitching, by the way. And that's, I'm not supposed to say that, but I'll tell you, I think that she's the kind of person that is going to be there to make sure that, you know, no stone is unturned and that things happen. I'm not always happy to see her, and I wish she would sit in the front row so we don't have to watch her, like, you know, come down the aisle and take forever and make this grand entrance. Between her and Barbara from Hillside Honda, it's like, why can't you sit in the front row, you know, get it over with? But I think that Suzanne would be a good person to keep on there. And the other two people, I'm all about Wayne. I mean, this guy just enthusiastically infuses me with energy all the time. The other person, the seat's open next year. I mean, 2019, the seat comes open. And she's so enthusiastic, we could put the other person on there. But the two people that are here tonight would be the ones that I would support. And I hate to say it, but I even would support Suzanne Lyons to stick around because, you know, you're working hard, you're not always working with us, sometimes you're working against us, but I got to say, at least you're working. So, thank you for all your hard work. And I know we don't always see the eye to eye, and I know that Bill can't stand me, and that's fine. I don't care.
Thanks, Kenny. Anyone else from council?
So I'll go ahead and talk about my reasoning in the ad hoc committee for promoting or recommending the two that are before us tonight. Wayne Yankee, of course, he pretty much said everything I would say. He's definitely a strong public advocate. He can navigate government. To me, I do not think he would be starting just on square one. He is somebody that is extremely motivated, very passionate, willing to put in the time, willing to do the investment of himself for the community, and is interested in serving in this new position. Lynn Andre, in addition to already being an experienced Park and Rec person, served on the school board, and I've also known her for the last 18 years through Healthy Start. She's been extremely involved in health and wellness for children through that program, as well as through sports. Her daughters, I'm sure everybody, you know, if you've been in Lakeport for a while, you've heard of the Andre Girls. She's been very involved in community sports. So that was another one who will not start at square one, who is also ready to hit the ground running. I felt that these were two very strong candidates. And it is not mutually exclusive to me to say I either appreciate someone or I nominate them. I can do both. And that was the instance here. Suzanne Lyons has unquestionably been a great, been a great asset. And is also, just like these other two, a very passionate advocate for our community. Wayne and Lynn, I felt, were very strong recommendations, and that those are the two that I picked to discuss with Stacy and Margaret. And then they ended up coming forward as a recommendation to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
That's an excellent description. There's so many qualified people, and they come in and meet with us, and we learn so much more about everybody that we never knew. And just like when Wayne came up here, that's what we got, you know, from everyone in that room. So it's not easy.
So the... I too like Suzanne. I too like Lynn, and I too like Wayne. I like all three of them. One part that I'm, since we're speaking... One part that I'm, since we're speaking candidly, thanks, Kenny. I'm just glad it was you who blew one of those words first and not me. Going on three years strong. The thing that did not, that through this hasn't sat well with me is, is, you know, Suzanne knows about a flaw in the mapping system for the walking path, and the message I've gotten was very much, "If I don't get reappointed to the planning commission, you're not going to know what that is." That's just kind of how it came across to me sitting up here, when Bill came up and said, "If you lose Suzanne, you lose that knowledge." So it's, if you, you know, if you don't reelect me, I'm not helping anymore. I'm taking my ball and I'm going home. That's how it came across to me. That's the feeling left in my chest right here. And I've seen how you've been involved, and I appreciate talking to you and you giving me all this background of stuff. You're a wealth of information, and it's awesome. But I don't, I don't like, I don't like having it feel like it's being used like a club. Does that make sense? Other comments?
If there's no further discussion, I'd like to move to appoint Wayne Yankee and Lynn Andre to the Parks and Recreation Commission, effective January 1, 2019, with terms expiring December 31, 2020. Second?
I have a motion and a second. Do we need to do a roll call on this one?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I didn't vote. I mean, I'm stuck. I'm stuck. Yeah, this was a great night to take the oath. Thank you, guys. You're wonderful. Well, Timmy? I'm going to have to vote aye. So further discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Wayne Yankee and Suzanne Lyons for the same term as previously stated. Second?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, City Council Communications, Margaret.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Let's see. We've got an update on our Wi-Fi. We should be, the last lease that was needed for the Wi-Fi towers was in, it's been signed last week, so we should start seeing work starting on our downtown Wi-Fi and hopefully all completed within two weeks, and then the next project will be library park.
Awesome.
Also, let's see. Our hours of operation next week, just to let everybody know, there's two days of business in the middle of the week, Monday and Tuesday, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day are holidays, so staff works Wednesday and Thursday, and then Fridays are the day off. So just want the public to realize that it will only be open on Wednesday and Thursday next week. And I guess that's it. Thank you, and have a Merry Christmas to everyone. Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Chief.
Yes, one thing, as council's aware and many of the public may be, we had an unfortunate incident last night where one of our officers was overcome by an unknown substance during a felony arrest and went into a serious medical distress. But tonight, I just wanted to make it known that I appreciate and thank all the council member city staff and many, many members of the public that have been sending us well wishes for Officer Walter all day today. Thank you.
Do you have any update on his condition?
He's doing great, and he will be back at work tomorrow.
Wonderful. Thank you. Kevin?
No report, just Merry Christmas, Happy New Year all.
Kenny? You came right to me, Pastor George. Oh, yeah, you're Pro 10 now, so you're a big dog. I want to commend Kurt Ackerman for coming in. I have people that come up to me, and they go, "Well, I'm going to go over there." And I always tell everybody that if you want something to come above, you know, into the radar, come down and you speak your piece, and then nobody can say that they didn't hear about it or they didn't know about it. And sometimes it takes guts to, you know, plan it and come down here, so I want to give them credit for that. Unlike the other guy that calls me on the phone all the time about every little issue, about gravel running down the road and about the street sweepers and stuff like that. So coming down, I think that you saw tonight, democracy in action, that people can come down and be heard and that things happen the way they should often, or maybe not, but you have a voice, and I think it's important in fact that he came down. And I will say that one of the things that is important that came up tonight, if we have code enforcement issues and code enforcement is not done, they don't go house to house looking for problems, but if there is a complaint and it's voiced, that it must be dealt with. I know that Tina over there, they have tens of thousands of code enforcement issues. They're not going to go out and look for them, but if there's a complaint, they should act on it. And I feel very strongly about county and city code enforcement action being taken summarily and taking care of business because we want to keep Lakeport clean, want to keep it neat, we want to sell homes if they want to get out and let them go. And I probably won't miss that guy. But anyway, have a happy holiday, and yep, aren't you glad that you're not like me?
Thanks, Kenny. He won't see the tape.
Counselwoman Turner?
I just wanted to commend you on your first meeting as mayor. Well, and you remembered everybody's last name, which was well better than what I did my first night as mayor, so you're going to be great. Other than that, happy holidays to everybody, and thanks for everybody for showing up tonight. It's always a much better meeting when people take the time to come in.
Stacy?
Congratulations for your new mayor and mayor pro 10, and thank you, Pastor Mayor Turner. You did a great job, and happy birthday.
Happy birthday!
I'm seriously grown up now.
I just want to wish everybody a happy Christmas and be safe for January 1.
Yeah. Thank you all for having me and electing me as mayor, positioning me as mayor, appointing me. Thank you for your past year condemning me to mayor, yet today it definitely feels like that. But thank you again for all the work you did on the ad hoc committees. Great information. Thank you. And thank you all for coming out. Thank you all for coming out, and I'm really glad that officer is on the bed.
I wanted to thank, I wanted to congratulate you for your role as new mayor. Appreciate it very much. And we really appreciate working with Maria, our past mayor. It's been a great pleasure, and we look forward to the new year. And also, I'm still going to get raffle tickets. I forgot, because we were going to give away the poinsettias, but I'm a little late, so if anybody wants a poinsettia, please take it. It's for the public. We're going to raffle them off, and I forgot to grab the tickets. And we have little trees, so anybody, please take one. Thank you.
Just pick a number between one and two.
Yeah. Congratulations to all the people who just got put on the commissions adjourned.